Thank you very much. Kathleen, why don't we get a roll call?
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Here.
Commissioner Blanco is absent. Commissioner Seifert is absent. Chair Dickerson.
Here. Thank you very much. Have, we all had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from June 4th. And if anybody has any comments on them, changes, otherwise we need a motion. I don't. No? We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for June 4th, 2025.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Public comment period. Speakers may provide public comment on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum 15 minutes for the public comment period. Unless a majority of the commission object, the chair may provide speakers more or less time to speak. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific member thereof. This is for items that are not on the agenda, in this case, the Perlman Apartments. Is there anybody out there that would like to comment on something other than Perlman Park? No? Okay. Then we will move on to the public hearing, and can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Chair Dickerson, members of the commission. My name is Carol Zizinhenny, and welcome to the public as well. Carol Zizinhenny, Senior Planner, presenting the Perlman Apartments project at 100 North Broadway. This is a downtown permit proposal for a six-story, 150-unit deed-restricted affordable apartment building in the downtown.
I'm sorry, Carol. Do, can someone turn our monitors on? I didn't know if that was one of these technical things or it just needs to be flipped on. No. Can you, Carol?
Thank you. So the 1.1 acre property on the, is located on the northeast corner of Main Street and Broadway, which is the existing location of Rosalyn Perlman Park. Union Plaza Apartments and Teamsters Local 986 are located to the north of the site. Santa Maria Sewing Superstore and Central Park, Central Plaza Park, Central Plaza Apartments are located to the east, so this is the sewing. These are the apartments. Gateway Mixed-Use Building and North China Restaurant are located across Broadway to the west. And the Firefighters Memorial Plaza and the planned location of Alva Newton Apartments are to the south across Main Street. The parking structure that will be under discussion today is located just to the east of Alva Newton Apartments. This is where resident parking would be proposed with this project as well as on-site. So these are site photos of the existing city park, which includes playground, pond, gazebo, matured trees, and several commemorative flower gardens and plaques. This is a view on the bottom of Main Street. And then this is a view from the corner of Broadway and Main Street. The project is in the Gateway District of the Downtown Specific Plan, located here on the map. The Downtown Specific Plan identifies the project's site location as a critical corner of the downtown. And since the look, the project is over 10,000 square feet in size, and it is location, located in a critical corner, a downtown permit that is recommended by your commission to City Council for a final determination is required. And this is Lot 2 of the city's surplus land sales and disposition agreement with the Vernon Group. This project provides the 25% required affordable housing, which is required as part of the city's sales of the surplus lands according to Surplus Lands Act. It is a key component of the downtown revitalization effort here. So on the right-hand side, this is a map showing the various projects proposed by the Vernon Group. Perlman Apartments is Lot Number 2. Lot Number 3 is Alva Newton Apartments. The future location of Lot 1 is right here, which is to be proposed. We have not received a pre-application yet. The Fallis Building, Fallis Mervins Building is located here, which is the Heritage Walk Lofts. And then a few other projects that are being, that are in the pipeline with the Vernon Group are on these other lots outlined with these circles. So the project concept has been reviewed at three public meetings. It was first reviewed by City Council on May 5th in 2024 as a concept only with massing and site plan. The Downtown Revitalization Committee reviewed this on May 29th of this year, and then your commission reviewed this at a study session on June 5th. At the study session, the project has been reviewed. In early response, the project has been generally positive. At the study session, commissioners requested additional architectural details on the north and west elevations of the building. I should, I mean, east elevations of the building, and a clear picture of the proposed street-level architectural finishes, a vehicle-loading area for residents, and an optional water feature in the courtyard were requested. There were concerns from the public regarding the loss of parkland, the proximity of the proposed building to Union Plaza Apartments, creating a loss of use to the south. There were concerns about traffic and pedestrian safety, as well as parking issues and parking overflow. The applicant has prepared a traffic report, which has been reviewed by city staff, and recommendations from that traffic report have been incorporated into the site plan. The applicant is also conditioned to provide additional architectural features, such as a green wall or murals, for example, on the north and east elevations. And then staff will also provide additional analysis of the building proximity to the existing apartments later on in the presentation. Due to the waterproofing required in the courtyard decks, the applicant has stated the water feature is not feasible for this affordable project. So without further ado, this is the site plan showing the ground floor of the apartment building. As stated earlier, the project would allow construction of 150 affordable apartment units. The units are proposed to be a mixture of income affordability with income ranges between 70% down to 30% for the units. And 78 parking stalls are proposed on-site. Of the required parking, the remainder of the required parking spaces would be provided in the city parking structure to the south across Main Street, which I identified earlier in this presentation. 15 long-term bike parking spaces are also provided with, with the project on this ground floor. So as mentioned, this is the ground floor, which will have a 1,000-square-foot leasing office on the corner of the building. So this is the intersection of Main and Broadway here. There are two elevators that provide access to the upper floors, as well as a stairwell. And then there are two additional stairwells on opposite sides of the building. There is a bike room and a mailroom, as well as the parking, the parking spaces. Vehicle access would be provided via two driveway entrance points. So one of this would be, one entrance would provide ingress and egress onto Broadway on the north side of the building, and then opposite into the alley, also ingress and egress. And then on the left-hand side is the second floor, so I was just talking about the ground floor. We're moving over to the second floor, which includes two resident courtyards that are open to the sky and feature planter boxes and potted plants with landscaping to soften the multipurpose areas. There's space for children to play or other lawn activities. Interior resident amenities are outlined in the darker yellow, which include a small fitness center and a community room. There is also an additional bike storage room on the second floor. And each floor includes tall ceilings, a common laundry room, and common trash disposal room. Those areas are over here on the north side of the building. And this is showing levels 3 through 6, and then the rooftop deck, or the rooftop, which is equipped to accommodate solar power. So as the proximity to Union Plaza was a concern raised both by commission and the public, staff has prepared this figure to illustrate the, the building separation between the existing Union Plaza and the proposed project. So the project proposes an average setback of seven feet around the entire building to the property line. The applicant has requested a three-foot rear yard setback reduction. The project is proposed to be 100% affordable, and under California, California's density bonus law, the project does qualify for waived or reduced development standards, which does include setback requirements as well. And so this figure specifically is intended to show how the resident, the separation dimensions between Union Plaza and how the resident windows might potentially line up and interact with each other. So the building separation ranges between 14 feet and 28 feet. So the 14-foot is the closest that the, the two buildings would get to each other. And then there are massing setbacks that would step the building back and provide additional separation from the, the units on the east side of the building. So all in all, about approximately seven units would be in close proximity to the, the proposed project. So the average distance between the two buildings is approximately 21 feet, 28 feet approximately being the most. And for comparison, the average width of the, of an alley in Santa Maria is approximately 12 feet, so this would be slightly larger than a city alley. So one thing to note on this figure, most of the Perlman building directly across from Union Plaza will be common areas, such as stairwells or the common laundry room. In total, one studio apartment unit would have windows facing, directly facing the, the residence' living room at Union Plaza. So from my understanding and research, bedrooms are located on the outside of the building with the, the living area closer to the stairwell and the center hallway of the apartment. So bedrooms would not be directly facing, or directly across from the studio unit. And then demonstrating this, this is, these are the overall unit.
Carol, can you go over that again? The, when you're speaking about the, the Union Building when you said that the laundry, or the laundry is in the new building?
The laundry is in the new building. So where my cursor is, is the laundry area, where there may or may not be windows, but there would not be someone occupying the laundry room at all times, depending on the, the activity of the residents.
Thank you.
So one, one, one unit would be the one that would be permanently occupied.
On each, on each floor?
On each floor, yes. So of the six floors proposed for the Perlman Apartments, there'd be one studio unit, and then the remainder, Union Plaza is actually seven stories tall, so there'd be seven units.
Thank you.
So they're, they have a smaller ceiling height. And so these are the overall unit plans. The studio that I had referenced earlier is on the bottom left, and the remainder of the units are intended to accommodate households or families of any size. So apartments range from a studio to a three-bedroom. So families with children would be able to lease, lease the space and have room. And this is, again, affordable and would allow for a, a range of different types of residents, singles, couples, or, or families. So these are the building elevations. This is the south elevation facing Main Street. As you can see in the kind of shaded-out area, this is the courtyard facing Main Street. The average building height is approximately 71 feet above ground level to the top of the estile roof, and is approximately 83 feet tall overall at the top of the tower element. So the, there are black and white architectural elevations and then colored elevations. The architectural elevations do show the amount of detail and seams that would be, and other architectural features that would be visible, but don't show up very well on these architectural color renderings. This is a view of the east elevation, so this would be facing the sewing building. This would be the north elevation, which would be facing the Union Plaza Apartments. And then this portion on the left-hand side here would be the area that would be visible from those 14 units on the south side. The applicant has proposed a mural already, and so any additional features that might soften this elevation would be discussed with, with the applicant during plan check. This is a view looking west towards Broadway. On the bottom is the, the driveway entrance. And then for, for additional illustration, showing the proximity of the outline of Union Plaza next to the proposed Perlman Apartments, this figure shows the approximate massing of the existing apartments, which are approximately 13 or 14 feet away at the closest point, and then 28 feet away at the furthest point. And again, this is showing the, the elevation that would face the apartments to the north. The building color and materials are consistent with the Spanish style that is prevalent throughout the downtown. The building materials are proposed to be stucco with a light sand finish, a Spanish tile roof with Juliet balconies, vinyl windows, foam trims, additional cornice elements up at the, at the roof line that are not very visible here, but are in the plans if you were to zoom in. And then murals along the street frontage, and vertical elements such as landscaping and arches are prevalent throughout. And as requested at the study session, this is a zoomed-in view of the Main Street and Broadway street frontages. So on the bottom is Main Street, and the applicant has confirmed they intend to address the concern about the plainness of the utility door. This, there was not enough time to update this, this figure to show that. And then this, on the top is Broadway. Shown very, very lightly are proposed street trees. The applicant is proposing to provide trees with this project. Five trees are proposed on Main Street, and four trees are proposed on Broadway. And in addition, the applicant is conditioned to replace the existing matured street trees according to municipal code standards. So for the largest trees that have a trunk diameter of greater than 12 inches, that would be a six-to-one replacement ratio. The applicant is providing 18% landscaping, which exceeds the 15% required as part of the Downtown Specific Plan. And this is a landscape plan showing the second-floor courtyard area. Trees are also proposed here, as well as artificial turf for the multipurpose areas, and benches, and additional patio furniture would also be proposed. So there's space for yoga, cornhole, badminton, possibly a play structure, depending on, on the applicant's plans moving forward for furnishing. And then these are just a few figures showing artistic renderings of the building to show massing and additional architectural details. You can see these seams in the building, and then additional dentals or other balcony features that don't show up as, as well on the colored elevations. So this is Main Street. The previous slide that we were looking at was also Main Street, but you can also see the, the Broadway section here. And this would be along a pedestrian paseo. There are two that are proposed on the north and east sides of the building as well, which is a requirement of the sales and disposition agreement. So these would be landscaped and maintained by the applicant. And this is the corner of Main Street and Broadway. And the project was reviewed for environmental review and was found to be adequately covered by the previously certified program environmental impact report prepared for the Downtown Specific Plan, and no additional environmental review is required. And with that, staff concludes our presentation. Staff recommends by motion that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve downtown permit DT 2025-0003 as conditioned in Attachment 2 of the staff memorandum dated July 16, 2025. Staff is available for questions, and the applicant is here as well, and they may have a presentation as well.
Thank you, Carol. Questions for staff at this time? Questions? Certainly. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. For the parking area, condition number seven, there was no modifications to that condition specifically, correct?
According to the memorandum?
Yeah. I just wanted to confirm.
No modifications proposed.
Okay. And then for the, the crosswalk improvements, is that also going to include the Town Center Drive and Main Street crosswalk, or is it just focused on Main and Broadway?
The improvements would just be focused on Main and Broadway, and the city is also coordinating with Caltrans as far as additional programmatic improvements that Caltrans is partnering with the city. As part of the multimodal downtown streetscape plan.
Okay, perfect. I imagine people are going to be trying to get to the apartment from like all different types of angles, so just want to ensure the safety there. I think, I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carol, can you, can you go over the water feature that, and why it was, and where it was supposed to go, that sort of thing? You said early on that there was a water feature that we'd asked about.
So from my understanding, Commissioner Mohajer had inquired about potential water feature, and accord, the architect is here as well and can maybe comment on that. My understanding is due to the, the membrane or water, watertightness of the second-floor courtyard area, it, it's infeasible to try and plum for that, just because of weatherproofing requirements. I can, I can defer to the, the applicant regarding more technical questions.
And where would it have gone on the second floor?
On the courtyard.
In the courtyard, somewhere like a fountain, that sort of thing?
Something to give it life, yeah.
Whatever. I see. And then I just want to clarify, so you said that the distance between the two buildings is as small as 14 feet? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Which is less than the distance from U to I. I, kind of eyeballing it. Boy, I, I sure feel for the people on the lower, on the lower levels. That is a monstrous thing to have 14 feet away from your back here on what used to be a, a park view. Any case, I'll, I'll move on at this time to, first, any disclosure by commissioners for ex parte communications with the applicant?
I have none.
And I have none. So let's move on to the applicant's presentation, please. Someone up to bat? And state your name and address for the record, please, and there you go. Thank you.
How about now? Good evening, Brad Vernon. How is everybody tonight? I'm the applicant with Vernon Group, and Victoria is from the architecture firm, and happy to answer any questions. My name? Brad Vernon. Sorry.
Okay, it works. Hi, everyone. My name is Victoria Nguyen. I'm with AO. We are, I am the project manager of this development, and I'm here with Vernon Group today and UPC as well. Just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight, and we look forward to your feedback. So located on the block of North Broadway and Main, this is a perspective view of what we envision 100 North Broadway would be. The Perlman Apartments would be five stories of multifamily affordable residential over one level of raised podium. It would be a concrete solid block on the ground floor. It would encompass the parking structure, and everything above would be the residential units. Just a brief overview. We are located northeast of the site, off of Main and Broadway, off of the Perlman, as mentioned before in the previous slide by Carol. Just a brief history, this project started back in 2021 when Vernon Group received the RFP for this development, and now we are in 2025 to further develop Lot 2. The building elevations is designed with 360 architecture in mind per the Downtown Specific Plan. Standards with, sorry, excuse me, with the pedestrians' experience in mind. Streetscapes are enhanced with storefront windows, decorative tiles, artistic murals, street trees, and climbing vines, and more. This is a view from Broadway where we try to play with different volume to break up the massing, so that doesn't seem flat. We introduce different roof variations and tower elements to anchor down the corner of Broadway and Main. This is another rendering from Main Street. We, for example, we tried to introduce a south-facing courtyard to break up the volumes of the residential units, and having a softer edge along Main Street. We were looking into having a second-level courtyard and a horizontal plane. and a horizontal plane that introduces an arcade of arches to make it feel like a more walkable pedestrian-friendly space. And as you wrap the corner of the, I guess, the paper, paper east, where we introduced the paseo to connect Main Street to the rear park, at park, existing park at the rear, this helps create the pedestrian-friendly experience. This next slide is the site plan. We are proposing two entrances into this parking podium. One is off of Broadway and the other is at the rear of the public, existing public right-of-way. Where you, we will be addressing the pedestrian safety elements by having a visibility triangle located at the corner of Main and Broadway and also where exiting out of Broadway. Additionally, we are proposing a landscape paseo where it will further be developed in later phases with our landscape architect. But this is to be maintained by our applicant. This, this is the elevations of all four sides of our building. One of the things that we wanted to show was that there are different variations. There's different, different building articulation. And we want to soften the edge between our existing neighbors and still introduce a walkable, pedestrian-friendly, human-scale ground floor experience as well. We are introducing Juliet balconies on the residential, everything above ground, levels two to five. And we are also envisioning greenery, greenscape to soften the edge of every 360 architecture of this building. Oh, is that it? Okay. This is in a large view of the south elevation. As mentioned, we do have a courtyard located on Level Two for the pedestrian, for the residents overlooking Main Street. This helps to soften the edge off of Main, off of, I guess, a Main Drive and still have a walkable experience for residents and locals. This next sheet is the color material board where we are utilizing stucco. We are utilizing Spanish tile and awnings. The awnings will be highlighted in areas where entrances will be. This help identify primary entrances where residents would be entering. As you all can see, we also have various types of colors to help, various types of paint colors to help break up the building as well to differentiate a top-middle-ground building, massing building break. This is the landscape plan. We are going to propose street trees along the Main Street, Broadway, and Main, and additionally be relocating the existing sign for the Perlman. This is our, the landscape plan for the courtyards located on Level Two. We are proposing two courtyards, one centralized and the other is south-facing off of Main. By, we are also proposing a central amenity space, which will further be developed once it moves forward. The central amenity space that connects these two courtyards, we wanted to create an indoor-outdoor experience while inviting the neighbors and residents to be connected in a way as well. Proposing courtyards not only bring natural light and ventilation to those nearby, surrounding the courtyards, it also helps to, you know, create a sense of space within a development. And not only does it, it's not where you come home, go to work, and go home. It's a place that you can meet your neighbors. It's where you could share your ideas and innovation for, and meet your neighbor, get to know your neighbor. But in summary, the Perlman will provide 150-deed restricted affordable apartments while implementing the downtown specific plan goals. Advancing in the city's regional housing needs allocation, promoting a walkable streetscape while providing a friendly, family-friendly apartments and amenities. I think that's it. Looking forward to your feedback.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Questions for the applicant? Sir, off Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the study session, I was asking about a loading area within the parking structure. I, I didn't see it. But, and the reason I was asking is how do you move in? Is it furnished?
So let me take you back to the site plan. So where we typically propose a loading area is where the trash staging would be. Trash staging only happens once a day or depending on the applicant and when they want to have, they apply for trash pickup times. Loading would be scheduled for new residents and it would be during the off-times and shared with the trash staging area.
And is there a freight elevator?
No, but these would be gurney elevators in this development as required by code.
Okay, so, so you'd be able to pull up with the, with the U-Haul truck to this trash loading area? And then you'd have to unload everything there?
Correct. So to, to the northeast side, we are going to try to provide enough space for a loading truck to reverse in and also trash staging as well. Because we are proposing, I guess, plus or minus like five bins at this location.
And bins are the rolling type, not the, not the containers, right? Not the big?
Correct.
Do you, have a height in mind of the parking structure? I'm sorry, of the parking floor to bottom of the beams?
Right now, the height of the podium is, to the top of the podium would be 12 feet.
Right, but for the structure below, you're looking at seven, maybe eight?
No, we need to keep a minimum of nine feet in the parking garage.
Okay, so would that be to the underside of the slab? Or would that be to the bottom of the?
It includes the plumbing and interstitial space for routing of slopes and piping and sprinklers as well. So the clearance in a parking garage is roughly nine to 10 feet in between somewhere there, depending on the slope of the piping that needs to occur.
So you wouldn't be able to get a moving truck in there?
No.
Okay, everything's at the staging area in the northeast corner?
Correct.
Okay. And, and you guys didn't add a, a loading area just for passengers in, in the garage?
Can you define passengers?
For passenger loading, if you have some seniors that are going to get picked up? Because there's not enough parking on, on site, right? So my question at the planning study session was if there was going to be a loading zone for passengers?
It would be shared with the trash staging area as the loading zone. It's where you could pull in and park. It would not, it would be clear of the incoming and ongoing traffic into the garage.
If I understand the question, it may be if it's an Uber that's picking up or dropping off, they, they would be able to drive through the parking structure and from either direction and, and drop off or pick up.
But there's no designated loading area where somebody can drop somebody off with groceries to go up if it's raining outside and they're parked on the other side of the street?
I do not believe there's anything designated, but it definitely could happen.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I, I think you mentioned, planning staff mentioned that you're going to look at the, the doors on the Main Street, the utility closet doors that was also something that was brought up in the study session. They're just a, you know, a little plain. And then lastly, one of the questions I had at the study session was those arches that have the, the graphics or murals or what have you there, they have a setback or they have a reveal on them on, on either both Main Street and on Broadway, the arches? Where you guys are showing art now?
Currently, the arches have a recess of plus minus six to eight inches.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that was all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mahajer?
Thank you, Chair. So I just kind of want to get a better understanding about the courtyard features and what that consists of. It's going to be very family-friendly, that's the goal here. And I saw that there is a tot lot. Can you describe what that is? Specifically?
So it's definitely not going to be something that a kid can go swinging and flying off into the street.
Okay.
I promise you that.
Okay. You want to keep it, yeah.
I, I think it will be a, a limited interactive play area. We typically do those on our multifamily developments. Insurance drives a lot of this stuff nowadays, such as the water features. We have a number of properties where we had water features and we've had to remove them because of insurance requirements and what goes on in California with insurance. But the tot lots are very specific. They're, you know, they're all-inclusive, safe-play type of spaces for kids.
Okay, I think that's really important, given the limited exterior sites. As for the management of the onsite parking, is that going to be assigned at first come, first served?
That is what we would likely do. It's, it's also possible that we do it as an assignment and it could be some sort of a priority system on tenure of tenants or something like that. We don't have that piece worked out 100%.
I imagine there's going to be a massive waitlist if you opt to go that route too for the people that are having to park off-site. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Agreed, yeah.
As for, let me see, I had one other one. I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you very much. At the study session, I, I, there were, there were a number of tenants from the adjoining building, specifically from the south side of the adjoining building to discuss the fact that the park is being taken away from them and that they, they basically are going to be looking at a large building roughly 14 feet away from them. So the question I have is, I, I had indicated that I really thought that some outreach needed to be done to them and some mitigating discussion with them needed to take place. What did you do?
So architecturally, we relooked the location of where the, our facades are. We tried to introduce an art mural, kind to soft, kind, kind of soften the edge of that location and even step back the building as well throughout, from floor level one all the way to the last level. We also tried to soften the edge by introducing Juliet balconies, but non-useable, non-accessible. It's just mounted on for aesthetics and also introducing greenscape as well.
And what do you mean by greenscape?
Like hanging vines, vines and even shrubs along the edge of the, on the ground floor as well. Kind of setting a division, but yet soft, it's a soft touch.
Did you reach out to the tenants of the other building to see if that seemed sufficient to them? Or, or at least that that went a certain distance to easing their, their concerns? Were there any meetings along those lines with the tenants?
Hi, my name is Lucas Budget with the Vernon Group. We reached out to Lori at the, the community organizer of the Union Plaza Apartments. The plan was to meet the end of last month. We reached out twice. We haven't heard back on when to schedule a meeting yet, but we have had discussion with her, just not worked through.
But you haven't had any meetings with her since the June 5th study session?
The conversation has just been over the phone and email, no in-person meetings yet.
When you say conversations, do you mean just trying to set up a time to have a conversation?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, okay. And then as far as the, the greenscape, I'm, I'm wondering, has any thought been given to, I mean, you have two courtyards. Why didn't you just shift one of the courtyards to that northeast corner and open that up, which would allow the tenants at the other building to also have a view of, of a courtyard? Something nice. I mean, it seems to me if you're taking away something nice, then that's an easy way to produce something nice.
Looking at the orientation of the building and how it's south-facing, we located the south courtyard facing Main Street. We did look at how it would affect the north side as well. For one, our, the residents will not get enough sunlight, daylighting, natural daylighting. And another is the building, the senior building, it, seven-story building is actually located more northeast. It wouldn't really be directly impacted with the?
So sunlight's, so sunlight's important to the, to the residents. Wouldn't you say that's true of the adjoining building also that you're putting an enormous shadow block to?
This is the reason why we stepped back that corner. Because as the sun orientation is, we, there will still be daylighting into that corridor at the north face as well. There was, we did a solar study as part of our submittal.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could add something, I think if, if the courtyard were located on the north side, it creates a, it does create a street wall on Main Street. But where the courtyard would line up in relation to the building on the northeast corner, all it's really going to do is create more private patios and windows looking at the diagonal of the existing building. So I think it would, it's going to create a bigger impact, I believe. It's also not going to help in any way with light.
Okay, those are my questions for the moment, thank you. Let's go ahead and open this meeting to the public. And is there any written communication?
Chair Dickerson, staff has not received any written communication other than the, the letter from the Vernon Group, which was addressed in the memorandum.
Thank you very much. I have one public comment speaker slip, and that is from James Seedman? Sir, why don't you step up the podium and you have three minutes? I appreciate that.
I'm very honest. Too, sometimes too honest. But where I live right now, sir, I've had tenants in my building and been there 25 years, and they look forward to that view of the park. It's just, it makes them feel good. They see the world going by and people, you know, I face this way and I can see the world going by. And I got two trees in front of me I don't want to lose, I love them. But, but what we're talking about is these people I've talked to, sir, and they're very upset, just the idea of having this monstrosity they're going to have to look at the rest of their life. Because some of these people are going to be there maybe 20, 25 years have been there? And just the idea they're going to be looking at this thing. It's just, a lot of them are very upset. You know, they couldn't, they didn't want to come tonight because they felt it wouldn't do any good. That's why I'm here in their place. Because just looking at a monstrosity, I can see where they're coming from, sir. Because, you know, they just like looking at the trees and when the waterfall was going, that type of thing. And, and they just, they just can't handle this. And they just, they just can't handle this big building in front of them, you know? That's the honest truth of it, sir. That's, we got 122 residents and I'm speaking for 122, including myself. This gentleman's for my building and that lady.
How many residents do you have on that face?
122, sir.
On that facing?
That facing, we probably have about 20. Yeah, but sir, they just love that view and they'd just kill them if it was gone. I'm serious, I'm honest about it, really. I'm just speaking for them, from the heart. How would you like to look at a monstrosity every day? That's what it is, a fancy monstrosity. You know, like the new building on the corner of Broadway and Main? You know, that building is still not rented yet? The Mexican restaurant still hasn't opened yet. And that's a monstrosity too, on the corner of Broadway and Main on the right-hand side? But no, sir, I'll pick a brief, but that's it. I'm speaking for those people.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
All right, I have no more speaker slips. Let's see, any rebuttals to, yes, ma'am? Yeah, why don't you come up and then you can fill out a speaker slip after you're done talking. We'll need your name and address for the record, please. Maybe somebody can get her a speaker slip.
My name is Susan Sorensen and I live at 120 North Broadway, Union Plaza. It's too bad that you couldn't, some way or other, that you could have made the building so that you could come in and leave without being on the two main streets of town. There is, something I realized was, there are so many semi-trucks that come and go, okay, that come and go 24/7 on both of those streets to the, to the packing houses and so forth. I mean, they're going all day, all night. That is not a good place. As I understand it, you want people to be out on the streets and be doing things and so forth? And that's, that's just chaos out there. I mean, you can't put a bunch of people out in the middle of that when you got semis coming and going all the time. So, that's not a very good thing. And I agree, the park is something that's very vital for humanity. I mean, people in this area, you're gonna jam up a bunch, I mean, it's like people being in jail. You know, you're just cramming as much as you can in a small space. And there's, your state of mind, you need something where you can get some peace and some quiet and tranquility and some respite. And then, there isn't any. You know, and then you're gonna have more people, more cars and just more chaos. So, it's not a very pleasant, and I wish some of you people that build all these things would come and live in them for a week and understand what we who live there go through with the traffic and the noise. All the sirens constantly, besides the trucks? I mean, they're just, there is no, except for like 2:00 in the morning is about the only time that it's quiet, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And, yeah, if you could fill out a speaker slip, there you go. If you would like to speak, then yeah, you need to go up there too, and you'll need to fill out a speaker slip after your comments. Name an address, name an address.
Hello, my name's Ralph Martinez and I am a new resident at the Union Plaza Apartments. I live on the top floor and I have a neighbor that, his name is Jimmy. He has the southwest apartment on the end. He's been there 19 years, he's not here now, but I personally met him and he told me that he enjoyed looking at the park all these years, for 19 years. And now, he has to look at a building, which he used to see the parade, he see the park, the people, the kids walking out there. He's personally told me that he is going to miss that view. And he's being deprived of his life. It's going to be changed by putting in this building. I sympathize with him and, you know, I understand the builders over here, they think they're going to improve Santa Maria Downtown. But, you know, New York has its Central Park. Well, Santa Maria has a Central Park now, that I think that maybe, it's rundown right now and things have happened in that, but I think the city could make a green area work. Maybe you can just go sit and watch the traffic and enjoy downtown. If this building goes up, well, that's not going to happen anymore for the people that been here. I've been living here since 1970 and it's always been this way. We're the all-American city and by taking that green area away from us is depriving of something that we've had for all these years. I think that Santa Maria is going to have a loss. So, that's what I have to say at this meeting and thank you very much for this opportunity to voice my opinion of my neighbor.
Thank you very much, appreciate your coming down. Do we have any more people who wanna make public comments? No. Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and, do the commissioners have any questions of the public or the applicant at this time? No? No, I don't know. Okay, then we're gonna close the public hearing and we're going to bring this back to the commissioners and for discussions and decision of the items. Commissioner Mahashen, wanna start?
Thank you, Chair. Well, first I just wanna say I do really sympathize with the neighboring residents. I know that park is, you know, such a view for them, something that they look forward to. But at the same time, I'm also torn because I feel like housing is so limited and the city is constantly growing and we really just can't turn down housing opportunities. So, I'm gonna say that I am able to support the project just on that last note.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honestly, after the last study session, I thought we'd probably see this back in study session. Just some of the things that concern me are, really is just mainly the loading, 'cause how do you move in 150 people using one shared loading zone, which doubles as a trash area? And then, the elevators are all the way on the south side of the property, is that correct? There's just the one set of elevators by the office? Yeah? Yes, and we heard from staff, they said yes. Okay, so, so I, I just don't, I think it's gonna be very tough to move in there. If it was studios, I get it, but you're looking at ones, twos and threes that, if it's families, you have a lot of stuff that you have to move in. And one of the things that I was hoping is that you would at least be able to pull in a truck into the, into the parking area where there would be, you know, out of the elements, be able to use the elevators, as now that I realize they're all in the south. So, that was, that was one of the main concerns and that was the reason I brought up at study session. You know, I get we need more housing, I get we need more types of housing. And looking at this building, I think it's a nice building, I do. One of the questions I did wanna ask, and I asked this at study session, is this a modular build? No, stick-built? Okay. No?
We are exploring modular as a possibility. Right now, it's designed to be able to accommodate that or go conventional.
Because modular would be a lot faster, right? It'd be a lot, logistically, a lot easier?
A bit more efficient to build, all of the above.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I mean, it looks, it looks like a nice building and I understand what the residents are saying. People probably thought that of the Union Building before it was built, right? I mean, people probably thought it was too big for the area. You know, so, so I get that. It does look like a nice building, I'm just a little, I wish we had a little bit more time to look at it, but I'm on the fence. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I also had, you know, my concerns at study session. We had a fair number of the public come out, the, some of the tenants from Union Plaza. And, you know, as I, as I discussed, as I listened to the other commissioners and the, and the concerns that they had and then I have, of course, my primary concern is, is about those residents. I'm less concerned about the residents that come forward after the building has been done and they want to move into those spaces that are facing it. That's a choice matter on their part. For the tenants that are currently there, this becomes something that is inflicted upon them. I understand and I appreciate, and I, to some extent, agree, as I did, you know, back when the city was considering selling Pearlman and developing it, I, that wasn't something I agreed with. I think parks are very, very important. But unfortunately, that boat has come and gone. They did cut their deal and the city did, and so, something will be built there. However, I, I don't think, I don't think my questions have been answered and more importantly, I'm not sure that our questions were really responded to, frankly, or they were responded to half-heartedly or not at all. I would prefer to see this project go back to study session where we can hash out the issues that I have, that Commissioner Lopez has, and quite frankly, to give us time to look at this rather hefty amount of additional information that we were just being given to see about the various conditional uses. I do not have enough information now, nor am I comfortable enough with what is happening to those residents at Union Plaza to go forward with this, this project right now. I could not consider approving this project to, to the City Council for their recommend, or to recommend it for them. I really, I would rather see this thing go back to study session. I don't wanna, frankly, I don't wanna make the sausage here. I'd prefer to roll it back. And so, I guess, I assume that we could make a, if it were the druthers of this body, we could send it back to study session for additional hashing out, is that correct?
You could, Chair Dickerson, however, you may wanna hear from the developer or our planning staff to give you a better understanding. My limited understanding is that this is, because it's 100% affordable project, the applicant, the owner is pursuing tax credits, which is a mechanism to help in the financing. And it was my understanding that if this did not get to council by a certain date, that they would be ineligible for the tax credits for this period and they'd have to wait either six months or another, or a year to get back into the queue for the, for the tax credits they're seeking. So there could be a timing issue here. The other thing to keep in mind is this, because it's a downtown project of this size, this project will be going to the City Council. So, your decision isn't final, it's a recommendation. And there will, would be time between this meeting and the council meeting for them to take more seriously or spend more time on, say, Commissioner Lopez's concern about the loading, some of the other concerns that have been raised by your commission, and perhaps they could incorporate some suggestions or some revisions at the council when they get there. The last thing that I wanna say before I let staff address the timing further is that this is a 100% affordable housing project. And as we all know, the California State Legislature has declared that we are in a housing supply and affordability crisis of historic proportions.
Or historic, or historic.
Yeah, exactly. And that's quoting the Housing Accountability Act that governs projects like this that really limits and ties our hands and prohibits the city from denying or reducing the density on 100% affordable housing project unless very specific health and safety findings can be made. So, while I too sympathize with the neighbors, because of the lack of affordable housing in the state, we don't really have a lot to say.
May I get a clarification? So if we, as a body, said that we would rather, by motion, put this back to study session to hash these things over, would we, would it go back to study session or is that become a recommendation to the City Council and it still moves forward?
No, I think those are two different things. If you continue it, then it will stay with you all. If you make a recommendation this evening, it'll move on to the City Council.
Thank you. Staff, is there anything you want to weigh in on?
I'd like to defer to the applicant regarding the timing issue that they're facing.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, and that was well said, I appreciate that. Yes, this is a 100% affordable project and it absolutely provides a lot of protections. We have tried to address, without reducing units, that we are already barely at the minimum threshold with what we need for the overall downtown-specific plan to create. Further moving the building back and losing units is not feasible. I am all for studying or taking any additional recommendations that you would give to City Council and then bringing that to City Council to see what we can do. For example, your comment about loading, I think we could look at designating loading spaces or things like that. We can definitely come up with a best plan. But, this project is going to be an affordable housing project and I, I mean, we're here, we're here to work with you, we'll look at these things. But my ask would be to recommend it for approval to City Council and identify some of these concerns that we can address before we get there. That would be my ask.
Can I just say, my concern is that we have asked, and we have asked, staff has asked, various things to be adjusted, to be looked at. And we, and just as recently as June 5th, when we had our asks, then, to a great extent, they were ignored. Now that we're looking to pull this thing back so then we can actually talk about it, all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we can look at all these things, we can, if you just push this forward to City Council, hold on, I'm finishing. Then, if we just put these things back to, if you just allow us to go forward to City Council, then we can discuss those issues and if anybody at that point wants to give us some thoughts, then we'll, you know, look at them now. The time we've looked at these things was when we were being asked to do that. Not now, not at this hearing. And that's the thing that irritates me so much about this, is that, you know, I know that staff asked about the problems that we were having with, with the union, with the residents at Union Plaza. And that goes back quite a ways, and I know that staff said, you know, you guys really need to do some massaging over there, some discussions. And to the great extent, you pretty much didn't. So, that's, that's the thing that I find the most irritating about this, is that now that we're at this real crux point that you brought it to, because you wanted to push this thing forward for time-wise, and now, now you wanna talk about it, but you don't really wanna cut a deal. You don't really wanna cut a deal right here, right now, on these various things, because one, it's too, there's too many big things to talk about. So, there you go. That's just my opinion, though.
I think that there are limitations with what we can do, and one of the things that we cannot do is reduce units, so. So we're, that, that's just not an option.
Except, except that this is where you're putting all of the affordable housing. You could limit units if you put additional affordable housing in some of the other buildings that you have lined up.
We are adhering to our development agreement that we've negotiated for the past five years, and it's approved by City Council.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that this body take this back to study, to the, the study session that works for whatever the, the next.
We would ask that you deny the project, then, please.
I'm making a motion that we take this back to study session, and that we can talk about it at study session and all the different things that we have issues with. So that's the motion that I have made.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah. At least for this, Commissioner, I'm not opposed to the density, the number of units. We need it, we need housing. It's just the logistics for me on the loading, and, and how do you move 151 people in there? That, that was my concern at study session. I guess one of my questions would be, how soon could this come back to study session? I, I know the one tomorrow is canceled, could it come to the, the following?
Chair Dickerson, Commissioner Lopez, so looking at the schedule, obviously, we can't do tomorrow due to the notice saying August 7th, there is a study session. We already have two items on the agenda, so we would be adding this one as a third item, so it could be a longer meeting. And then, we would need to make sure that the applicant could also update the plans or get us the information needed for the study session, because I think it's clear what your questions and, and concerns are here, so they just need to be responsive to those. But I'm assuming that they could, looks like.
Heather?
Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just a thought occurred. Perhaps it would be more prudent to continue it to a planning commission evening like this, because if you do a study session, it's just going to add even more time, because it has to go to a study session, then come, you can't approve it at study session. So then it would have to come still to another planning commission meeting. So at least if you scheduled, continued it to a, a planning commission meeting, it saves a little bit of the time, but they still would have, you know, an interim time to reach back out to Union Plaza and address the different things you've raised.
The, yeah, but the problem that we have if we don't take it to study session first is that any of the discussions that take place in a public hearing, we're on the fly trying to do recommendations, conditional, conditions, et cetera, thing, along those lines, versus whether or not the thing is able to be worked out at a study session, which then allows the applicant or whoever to weigh in on whether or not they're able to modify their plans, how that all goes forward. I, I don't know that we could do that in a public hearing in a, in any type of timely manner. That, that's my concern.
Yeah, just a suggestion, trying to.
Thank you.
Work around timing concerns.
So is August 7th the, the one that we would, and, and what do we got there? I mean, are they relatively short items on study session, or, because I imagine this one's going to be a long one?
Chair Dickerson, so we have Seaside Packaging, they're, they're Phase 2 of their project. So these are projects you haven't seen yet. And then the new, there's a new Hyundai dealership as well.
Oh, that's fairly long also, then.
So I think we can get through those fairly quickly, they're not very complex.
Yeah.
This is an overview of those two projects for you before going to a hearing.
Okay. Then, then I would modify my motion that we would come back, we would go to the study session on August 7th.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question to the applicant?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Mr. Vernon?
Sorry.
Would that, would that timing kill, kill you on?
Yes, we would be pulling our application.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can elaborate on that if you like, but the, the way the state funding works is if we don't get to City Council at this next meeting, we're looking at a one-year delay. So we would be pulling the application and starting again in six or eight months, unfortunately. That, that's why I was making the suggestion that if, if there are solutions that we could figure out right now, and again, I feel that we, you know, we moved the building back 10 feet, we eliminated windows, we put the laundry at that face, we put the mural, I, I do believe we addressed some of these things. I'm sorry if we're not in agreement on that, but I, I think that we did everything that we could do within the confines of the building. If there are other solutions, I, I could commit to those right now if, if you tell me what those are, but I don't know what more we could do.
Well, I, I don't know what you could do about Commissioner Lopez's issues. I mean, it seems to me that that needs a rework, and I'm not sure that you can come up with a solution for the issues that I have either on the fly right now, because once again, I think that's looking at a rework. And, you know, and to some extent, with the, with the issues that are there, you kind of wonder if maybe this project isn't ready. In other words, if it needs, if we have this many questions about it, and they are of substantive nature, then you have to wonder whether it just, this isn't quite right. I mean, and, and I'm not against, I, I liked the building, I truly did. I, I, I think it's fine regarding the, the, I mean, I, I like the, the low-income elements of it, and it's like, but I have some real concerns about, about the impact to other people. If you can tell me how, at this, at this meeting, you can mitigate the problems that you're inflicting on other people, people outside your building, and it's, and it's adequate to the people who are right there next to you, then by all means, you know, pull the trigger on it, tell me what that is, we'll include it in the deal, and then we can, we can move forward. Or, or what the issue is for, for Commissioner Lopez's, a fix for that.
I, I think that a, a solution that we could look at with the loading, and again, we, we own a lot of these buildings, and we understand that single elevators actually work perfectly fine. So in this case, we have a dual elevator. One great solution that I could propose is we put the ele, one of the elevators at the northeast corner, and that could be used as more of a loading elevator for the, for, for move-ins and move-outs. Move-ins and move-outs are always staggered, we don't see a lot of traffic, and our managers do a great job of managing when they come and go with that. So that, that to me would be the ultimate solution to solve that. No cost to us, no hair off our back to move one elevator to the other side, it, it works perfectly fine. In, in terms of the conflict with the, with the other building, within the footprint, we were able to pull back approximately 10 feet, or approximately 10 feet on that corner to improve the, the, the solar gain to the existing building. We've minimized the windows, we did the art, unfortunately, I don't know, and, and we did limit that there would not be any private patios on that side by that building. So we've tried to do everything we can within the confines of this building. The, the way the parking looks, and if we pull up the, the ground floor, the way that the traffic flows through the building onto the public streets, it's, it's kind of, there, there's not much else we can do with it. We have to have it line up to the east.
May I ask, because I, and I'm, I'm sure Heather would tell us that what I'm suggesting is not something we can, we can deny this project with, or even ask of you, but let me give you an idea, and if it's something that is, that is of interest to you, then you can suggest, you can suggest it back. You've got an entire row of apartments that, that face the, the south. What if you were to make an offer to the residents that are currently on the south side of Union Plaza, that you would, in essence, mirror their rent and give them apartments that they would then have views looking out, until they decide to leave, or they pass away, or whatever the deal is?
I think that's an excellent idea. There are some AMI requirements, I might let Lucas speak to that a little more, but I think, I think in general, I like, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. And I don't know if that is good enough for them, it may very well be good enough for me, but it gives them a choice. It gives them an out that they don't necessarily, and then anybody that moves into those apartments, that's on them. They can move in, they can not move in with your building there, but at least they know what's happening. I just feel terrible for these seniors that more than likely are going to remain there for the rest of their lives, and then I just didn't like the thought of them losing out so you would gain. Is, and if that works for you, I don't know how we would structure that in terms of, of our thing. It sounds like you're, it, it sounds like.
I'm okay with the elevator.
Do the elevators have a fix?
Yeah.
And then it sounds like we might have a fix, but you would have to suggest this to us.
I mean.
Because we can't suggest it to you.
Again, to be fair, I, I, I completely empathize with, with everybody, I do. But again, we're, we're coming into this five years ago on the back of a 20-year-long downtown plan to build housing in this location. Unfortunately, it does impact some people, and I think if, if there were an offer that we could make, where we would allow them to come in and, and live in these apartments, have a brand-new apartment upgraded, et cetera.
Same floor, whatever floor they're on, just a like to like.
I, I think this is a great idea that we could bring forward and, and look at doing.
How would we structure that as a condition, since it's being suggested by the applicant that this is a wonderful thing to do? Do we, Heather?
Rest in peace.
Oh, you know, whoever.
Yeah, I, I don't think we do that right now. I'm not prepared to do that right now, but that's why we do have the time between now and the council meeting.
Okay.
And they are committing to that on the record. So I think that's something that we could look into between now and the council meeting.
Would it, would it sink your project to table this meeting to the next, to the next public hearing, so you bring it back to us with the proposal, with the conditions, with this, so we get to see it, I'm sure it'll be fine, and then we can move this thing along to see council?
Unfortunately, and, and I think that staff could speak to this, but I don't think we meet the timing if we do that.
Dana, or Carol, Kathleen, whoever?
Commissioner Dickerson, so one of the issues we have is that there's only one council meeting in August and one in September.
Right.
And so, the timing still doesn't quite work out for what the applicant needs to do for the tax credits. What you could do is direct us to put together a condition of approval that would go to the City Council on your recommendation, and, and we would do that as staff and, and forward that to them.
Okay, that, that sounds reasonable, and as Heather said, you're, you're on, you're on record.
I, I agree with that.
Okay.
With that plan.
You're good for me. Okay, I will pull back my, my motion, and we will need now a motion for approval based on the two additional elements we just talked about. And however that is structured. Bang it out, man.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend that the City Council approve downtown-specific plan DT 2025-0003 with the two conditions of moving the elevator to make it more, I guess, spread out the, the way you could move in, and also what Mr. Vernon mentioned about giving some priority to the existing tenants of the Union Building for move-in to the new building once completed.
Strictly on, strictly the, the south-side tenants?
The, the south-side tenants.
South-side tenants. Does that, does that work for you?
I'm, I'm good with all of that, yes, thank you.
Do we have a second? Yes, ma'am.
I just, if we could put in the record, I, I would appreciate it, I think it would be prudent if the applicant could make a first draft of what that condition would look like, and then can work with staff on making sure that it, it works for staff as well.
Good. Do we have a second?
I was just going to say, that, that also being part of the.
Additional to the motion is, and that. Okay.
Second.
Your second?
Second, yes.
All right, how about a roll call?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Is that thing on? Sometimes this needs a. Yeah, this is off, but this is on. I, I don't know. All right, let's go ahead and move on to the regular, do we want to give a couple minutes? Do we have any additional stuff? Yeah, okay, then let's, let's wait till people are done. Folks, if you could take it outside.
Thank you.
To whatever fisticuffs you care to do out there. You know, get all pugilist on people. Yeah. How do you live in 151 people, families, how? I, I was thinking, I was thinking of, of, of the dorms. I was thinking of the dorms, it's like, man, all those, it's a mad. All right, for the few remaining, let's move on to the regular business, oral reports from Planning Commission and staff.
All right, thank you Chair Dickerson, Commissioners. The, I just wanted to remind you all that the study session tomorrow has been canceled just due to no items for that meeting. And then our next hearing will be on August 6th. We have two items scheduled for that hearing, and then August 7th, the study session as well. And then, moving forward, September 3rd is a public hearing, we also have items that are scheduled for that date as well. And I will send you an email with those dates too, so that you have that. And I don't have anything else to update you on tonight, but if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Any questions? Any updates?
I have a real quick question. When are the Newman Apartments coming online anytime soon?
The Alvin Newton Apartments?
Yeah, Newton, sorry.
Oh, okay, I was trying to, so many projects lately. They are working on that, in fact, Carol's the project manager, do you want to give an update on that?
Sure. Chair Dickerson, Commissioner Lopez, the Alvin Newton Apartments are in plan review. Currently, the applicant is working on fire curtain wall issue with, due to the proximity to the parking structure. So their, their engineers are working with the building official and the fire marshal to work out that fire code requirement. So they have, it, the plans have been reviewed once already, and staff anticipates receiving another submittal as soon as they've worked out that issue.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I have a question, and that is the, the old Costco building. I noticed two enormous skyscraper-looking pillars that have appeared in front of the building, and I'm curious, what are they?
Well, I will have to go take a look at that, Chair Dickerson, I've not actually noticed that myself, but.
I think, I just saw the framework of it today getting off the freeway, so maybe they just put it up.
They are doing some exterior modifications to the building. It's not extensive, but they're, they're repainting it and doing some.
It's like two big towers, it's really weird. And, and, I mean, I could only eyeball because I was in traffic, but they looked like they were taller than the peak over, over the business just to the right. So anyway, they, it, it just looked big, and it was, it was odd, so, I was curious.
Well, I can look into it further and get back to you on your question.
Okay.
There were, that wall, that wall's about 35 feet high, and it's about a foot thick, so when they opened up the wall.
so when they opened up the walls, the seismic forces or wind forces that blow in and out, they had to reinforce those openings. But you're talking about the steel stud towers?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but I know that they had to reinforce those openings in the, because they're huge openings in that structure.
I can talk to our building official and get back to you.
Yeah, I'm just curious, thank you. All right, anything else? Mr. Mohajer, you sure? All right. Suzanne, nothing? No? Thank you very much.